Good evening, everyone. We'll start with a quick roll call. Commissioner Cross?
Present.
Commissioner Ray?
Here.
And Commissioner Ackerman?
Here.
We have three commissioners present.
So, good evening, everyone. I just want to first take a moment and say thank you for coming. As you may or may not be aware, this is the third Rule 511 hearing we've had, the second related to the Lowry Ranch cap. And our plan is to try and do so for all of the OGDPs that will be coming up for the Lowry Ranch cap. So this is going to be the first one that will be heard, and thus, the first one that we're going to be doing for the OGDP-specific level for the Lowry Ranch cap. Just a couple of quick notes. First of all, this is for DOCT 240600148. It is the State La Plata South OGDP. We do like our acronyms. It's the Oil and Gas Development Plan. And just, I'm going to kind of go over a few quick notes before we begin here. The first is, as you may have noticed, there's three of the seven commissioners present here today. That's not a quorum. I want to make sure everyone notes first that we are recording it. Mr. Thomas did start the recorder here just before he began. And this will be recorded and will be reviewed by the other commissioners who are not present here today. The same thing happened at the Draco 511 hearing, and everyone, I can assure you, will be listening to the recording. In fact, I will probably go in back and listen to the recording as well. The other thing to note is, with only three of the commissioners here, we don't have a quorum. And while not completely relevant, it's important to recognize that. The point of the 511 hearing today is not to vote. It's not to deliberate. It's not for questions and answers with us. The point is to hear from you, the members of the community. And so, we want to try and get out to those that are going to be most directly impacted, those that are closest to where this development plan is going to take place, to try and hear your thoughts on it. For, against, however you feel about it, we want to know how this impacts you, how you feel about the proposal, and what ideas you have about the proposal. I do want to recognize a few others in attendance tonight. We do have colleagues here from Colorado Parks and Wildlife who are involved in the wildlife aspects of this. We have colleagues joining us from the State Land Board, and this is State Land Board land that the Lowry Ranch cap is on. We have colleagues from Department of Public Health, Safety and Environment, who are also involved in this and give consults on all these applications. We also have representatives from Arapahoe County here. We have representatives from the city of Aurora here. We have representatives from Crestone, the operator here. And I'd just like to also thank the op-duty officers that we have here. They're graciously taking their time to come out and make sure that everything goes according to plan here. And finally, I just also want to thank Arapahoe County for letting us use this facility. We used it here last time. They do a great job setting up, and it's a fantastic facility for us to be able to use. And so, we're greatly appreciative of being able to use this facility for these hearings. Couple of final notes. We do have Spanish translation available. I'm not sure if anybody else has indicated. I don't think we've had anybody sign up for it, but we do have Spanish translation available, should it be required. I think there is a child area. We do have some kids here, and that's great. And I believe I was told that we're going to have to hear from some kids as well, which I'm happy to hear about as well. But we do have areas available for children to play, or if you need to kind of get away with your kids as well. Again, the point here is to hear from you, from the community members. So, we're going to have a timer that's up, and Mr. Thomas has it here. Everybody's going to get three minutes to speak. We're usually a little lax with it. Like, we do try and get you to stick as close to three minutes as possible, because as you can see, we do have quite a few people that we are going to be hearing from tonight. And so, we want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity. That said, we're not going to cut you off at three minutes and one second or anything like that. We want to make sure that you get to the end of what you're trying to say. But we do ask that you do try and keep your three minutes as close as possible. I believe we did have initially 21 folks. I'm not sure if that's changed. 21 folks initially signed up to speak. I would also recognize that we had 11 written public comments submitted beforehand, and there's still going to be time to submit additional written public comments, as well as time to be able to submit public comments orally at the actual hearing on this OGDP. So you know, we've received those 11 public comments that were written already. We've read through them. We read through all the public comments that came through in the actual cap hearing as well. And I do believe that they're hearing for this, and I'm not sure if everybody is aware. I believe it is set up to be heard on March 19th of this year, just so everyone is aware for that. So if you would like to submit public comments, again, either written or at the hearing, provide additional oral comments, March 19th is the day for that. And that will be on Zoom as we normally do our hearings, and so you'll be able to do that then as well. Just as an FYI, I have my notes here. I like to take a lot of notes. I know Commissioner Ackerman likes to take a lot of notes as well. Commissioner Ray has his notepad here. So you'll probably see us taking notes. It doesn't mean we're not listening to you. We like to make sure we get everything down. So if you don't see us looking at you as you're speaking, don't worry. We are listening. I assure you, we're just taking notes. And I think the only other things that I wanted to make sure we talked about is, I'm going to pass the microphone on to my fellow commissioners here to see if they have any additional comments. But most notably, Mr. Thomas is also going to take a minute to briefly describe the ECMC mission and the OGDP permitting process. But otherwise, again, I just want to really want to thank you guys for taking the time out of your day to come and speak to us and provide us your input as those that are going to be most affected by the application before us. And so, with that, thank you. And I will pass it to my other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Cross. My name is Aaron Ray. I'm Assistant Director for Energy at the Colorado Department of Natural Resources, and I sit in the ex officio seat representing Executive Director Dan Griggs on the commission. I just want to echo Commissioners Cross. Thanks for you to be here this evening, sharing your thoughts about this important decision the commission has to make. So thank you very much.
Thanks. I'll also thank you for being here. My name's Brett Ackerman. As Commissioner Cross mentioned, I'm one of the commissioners as well. The five sitting commissioners that are ex officio commissioners each have an expertise for which they're appointed. And I'm the commissioner that sits in the Wildlife, Environment, and Reclamation seat. And so, if you have issues specific to that, I'm certainly happy to talk about any issues. But if you have issues specific to that, I'm here.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Elias Thomas. I'm the Hearings Manager at ECMC. I'm not a commissioner. ECM's mission is to regulate the development of production of oil and gas, deep geothermal resources, the capture and sequestration of carbon, and the underground storage of natural gas in a manner that protects public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources. I'm going to briefly describe ECMC's permitting process and some details about this proposed OGDP, or Oil and Gas Development Plan. This is the Crestone State La Plata South Oil and Gas Development Plan, as you all know. As an initial matter, a comprehensive area plan, or a CAP, is a holistic landscape-level consultative process for planning and permitting locations for the production of oil and gas in the state of Colorado. It precedes an Oil and Gas Development Plan in certain scenarios. An OGDP is a process that requires energy development operators to seek approval from the commission for each proposed drilling location. Because the CAP process supports ECMC's mission, ECMC encourages and sometimes may require oil and gas operators to submit caps for approval prior to submitting OGDPs. A CAP can span two or more subsequent OGDPs, and it can encompass a single well or up to several dozen wells or multiple locations. Obtaining ECMC's approval for a CAP or an OGDP is an extensive and public process. Crestone obtained approval for the CAP in the summer of 2024, and many of you participated in that process. Next, after that approval, the operator follows with the OGDP process. ECMC reviews OGDP application materials for compliance with all statutory and regulatory requirements. The operator's application passes the objective completeness phase upon an analysis that the CAP or OGDP complies with those statutes and rules. No oil and gas development can occur in the state of Colorado without passing the completeness phase. Crestone submitted their application, and it has passed that completeness phase. Following the completeness phase, the 45-day public comment period begins, and that is the phase we are currently in with this OGDP. Commission hearings are public meetings, and ECMC welcomes public comments in the following ways: stakeholder comments during the application phase, written comments from the public submitted during the 45-day public comment period, real-time comments during the hearings, and comments at the 511 public comment hearings, like this one. At the conclusion of the public comment phase, ECMC will hold a public hearing at which the commission will decide to approve, deny, or stay the OGDP. Regarding this specific OGDP, I just want to note that this is regarding an existing location. This OGDP application will be expanding that existing locations from two to 19 wells, and is also asking to reduce production facilities from eight to two tanks. This is the first of potentially eight locations within the cap. So there could be eight of these hearings. Thank you again for your time to share your views with us, and I will turn it back over to Commissioner Cross to begin the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And I believe, I don't think we have any elected officials sent up to speak. Okay. So I believe what's going to happen now is everybody should have gotten a number. And we'll just try and make sure that we call who's going to be on deck and in the hole, so we can kind of keep this process going. But if you don't have a number and you'd like to speak, you should go over to the table, and Crestone will get you numbers so you'll be ready to speak. But again, I think we're ready to go. Okay. So, speaker number one.
Hi. My name is Eloise Good, and I live in Arapahoe County. I survived a book series by Lauren Charriese. It's one of my favorite book series, where man-made and natural disasters happen. We don't live in an area where tsunamis, bad earthquakes, or volcanoes are caused. But we do live in a dry place that has more wildfires caused by humans. The main cause of wildfires here in Colorado are from humans, through equipment, malfunctions, and campfires. Here on Lowry Ranch, we have high plains and grasslands that can catch fire up years easily. If there is a leak or flaring of the gas and it catches fire, these grasslands will ignite. My generation has a lot to deal with already, like climate change, and we all breathe the same air. And even with this gas, it's not just going into the atmosphere. It will just heat up the earth and make the world end sooner. I don't want to be a survivor of the human-caused disaster. I also want to talk about how if the Aurora reservoir experiences a leak that pollutes the reservoir, we will not be able to use it as our drinking water. State La Plata South is the first to go underneath the reservoir. I learned at school about how water cycles through the state. Water travels all through the factories to get clean. And this water polluted by forever chemicals caused by fracking, never to be used again, cannot be cleaned in these factories. What if the wildlife are so disruptive that they don't return to their natural habitat again? It won't be habitat. It will be a human-disrupted habitat. It is terrible how the industry is removing the prairie dog to do to the fracking, by either poisoning them or covering their holes, not knowing if some are still in their holes and cannot get out when the fracking begins. I have friends, Aria, Jackson, and Micah, that live nearby and go to Altitude Elementary School, which is only one mile from one of the proposed fracking wells. I'm very worried about them and what's going to happen to them as they play on the playground and breathe this air. Fracking pollutes the air and causes asthma and other lung diseases. Everybody has a voice and the power to make a difference. That is why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Eloise. Speaker number two. And speaker number three, if you could please be ready to speak.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you this evening. And my name is Marsha Goldsmith-Camp. And I live in Arapahoe County. Civitas Crestone stated on this past Friday CBS4 news coverage for the event, "We're especially proud of our design and utilization of the latest technologies to achieve and even exceed the state's and Arapahoe County's regulations, which remain among the strictest in the country." If this statement is true, why does Civitas Crestone continue to have documented violations, cited issues, and paid fines? They claim that their area of expertise to develop oil and gas close to residential communities. They do not have a spotless record with these developments. Civitas Crestone continues to have discrepancies between their county and state applications for the exact same well pads. List of equipment used, number of diesel road miles, are just two examples of this. These items significantly affect cumulative impacts that need to be factored into their developments. The health risks stated in the Cumulative Impact section of this application uses data from CTEH. That doesn't actually show important details, such as how many wells were on the pads monitored in the study used in the phase of operations during the length of the study. Crestone continues to cite research from this oil and gas-focused organization in an extremely biased fashion. This is not helpful when we're trying to analyze the true effects of cumulative impacts. Improper data collection techniques or using data from third parties who have tampered with the facts leads us all to question the validity of the application. How can we properly evaluate these applications without the correct data? What other discrepancies and omissions are there that those reviewing these applications haven't noticed? Without proper testing to prove that this area is safe to drill in, how can the ECMC make decisions to move forward with the first CAP application only 1.4 miles from the Aurora reservoir that's going underneath the reservoir? How can we prove that likelihood of a leak will not affect our drinking water? STAR has several members who are active in the industry. They reviewed this application and have submitted their comments. They know from their professional, hands-on experience, risks are too high nearby sensitive infrastructure, close to residential homes, and have told us their companies would never take the risk to develop this operation in its proposed location. We are asking the ECMC to require the operator to demonstrate that drilling will be safe for all of us. Please stay with this application until the studies can be completed. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Marsha Goldsmith-Camp. I'm from South Shore. In the engineering community, it's well-known that continuous low-level vibrations can have harmful effects due to the accumulated fatigue that are just as bad as the damage from a single larger-level shopway, such as an earthquake. For La Plata, the continuous low-level seismicity of drilling and fracking can potentially lead to serious degradation of the integrity of the Aurora reservoir stand. If it fails either above or below ground level, the resultant leak could wash through the Lowry Superfund site, contaminating a much larger residential region. La Plata's well cores will also be running approximately one mile from the border of the Superfund site. The EPA has informed both the EP, ECMC, and Arapahoe County that a scientifically justified buffer zone is needed around the site, but no one has yet performed that analysis. So is one mile enough? We don't know. This Superfund site has no liner, and its containment is dependent on a fragile thin layer of partially porous bedrock. The low-level seismicity associated with the drilling and fracking could be the trigger that fractures the bedrock, leading to a disastrous level of contamination of the entire Denver Basin aquifer system, as so much of our region depends upon for their drinking water. And as you're aware, it's critical to require electrification for the protection of the environment, the community, and the many sensitive receptors for both excessive noise and pollution. Crestone states that they will be utilizing grid-sourced electrification for the drilling and production phases, which is a good start. But they will not be electrifying for the fracking or completion phase, which should also be included. In addition, simple sound walls have proven to not be sufficient to protect nearby communities and sensitive receptors from excessive equipment noise. So the ECMC must insist on using the best state-of-the-art sound mitigation practices for all phases of operation from drilling through to production. This is all in addition to the overwhelming issues associated with environmental impacts to all of us who live not only near the Lowry Ranch, but anywhere within the Denver metro area. Thank you.
Speaker number four and speaker number five, if you could be ready to speak.
Good evening. Thank you again for listening to all of us. I live one mile from the Aurora reservoir, so I'm very concerned about this. I'm on English, and I have well, and we depend on that water. But today, I want to talk to you about oil and gas leaks and spills that continue to happen in Colorado. So I downloaded this information from the ECMC website. So I imagine all of you are pretty familiar with that site and have also listened to the reports. Last year alone, there were 4,917 reported spills and leaks in Colorado. That's just one year. These are last year. These are labeled flow-line system leaks, gas gathering pipeline leaks, off-locationing flow-line leaks, pipeline leaks, pit leaks, produce-water-transfer system leaks, tank battery leaks, and well leaks. I do realize some of these sites are historical from the messes that the humans have been past. But since Crestone has been awarded permits to drill on the cap, I focused their company for my research. In 2024 alone, they had 1,421 reports of contaminants. I chose to look at 20 random Crestone reports. I learned that many of the leaks were on the surface of our soil. To remedy the situation, the polluted dirt was dug up and dumped to some other poor citizens' farm, the Arior Farm. Do you guys know if this contaminated soil is being treated? I mean, we're just creating another super-spun site for these kids to deal with in the future? And in the 20 reports I reviewed, there were several that stated no soil was taken away, but the box in the report that says official disposal was checked. How can that be? So they took it away, off-site disposal. The spills describe, and I quote, "A suspected or actual spill or release of any volume where the volume cannot be immediately determined, including a spill or release of any volume that daylights from the surface." I translate that quote as, "Oops, something leaked or spilled. The ground is polluted, but we don't know what the leak is made of, how much there is, and how deep it went." So we need to solve these issues before we can continue what we're doing. Reports also show the depth of groundwater on average where they find the toxins is 14 and a half feet deep. I do not think I'd have to quote any brilliant scientist. Rest of leave, that if we punch a whole through groundwater, the water goes where it wants, and carry with it any pollutants that it comes in contact with. Last thing I want to mention, the U.S. has more oil than gas than it needs. The expectation of oil and gas is making billionaires more billions. Why must our government that is supposed to protect us do this to us? I think we all know the answer for that. Thank you very much again.
Could you please provide your names?
Oh, sure. Sally, and you.
Thank you, Sally. Speaker number five and speaker number six, if you could be prepared to speak.
I have a couple of handouts. I wonder if I have permission to approach the bench?
Absolutely.
So we keep it efficient. These handouts that I've given to the commissioners, I've also given the staff, and so they'll be available online to anybody that wants to look at them. My name is Dennis Markoche. And I live at 3733 South Curve Circle in Incorporated Arapahoe County. It's near the Plains Conservation Center, and it's about a mile from the Lowry landfill. I want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to testify this evening. And I have provided them a copy with the Arapahoe County map. And that's also available on the Arapahoe County website for anybody that wants to see it. What they show on that map is some setback distances around the reservoir, Aurora reservoir, and the proposed reservoirs. But what I want to focus your attention on are the circles around each of the Lowry cap well sites. Now, we're talking about the La Plata well site tonight. But this applies to the other ones as well. The radius of those circles is one mile. Now, why is that significant? It's significant because the potential evacuation area, if there's a well fire or some other catastrophic failure at the well, is about one mile. So you can see how with the La Plata site, that impacts the proposed reservoir number two directly. And if you look at the other well sites, the pads in the Lowry cap, they even have a bigger impact on the Aurora reservoir, South Shore, Southlands, elementary schools. Cherry Creek has a football stadium out there, the Fairgrounds. All these can potentially be impacted by catastrophic well failure. And we have no plan to deal with that. I provided a link to a story about a well fire that occurred here in Arapahoe County in 2021. And that fire, that well site burned all day because it involved hazardous materials. The fire department couldn't go in to put out that fire. They did not know what the hazardous materials were. I've had that training myself in my work experience, not as a fireman, but as an employee in a laboratory dealing with hazardous material spills. And you've got to clear those areas out and keep people away because of the hazardous materials. Thank you. That concludes my comments tonight. Thank you. We're here.
And we will make sure that these handouts are made by the talking members. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Krista. I live on the Three Corners site. So our property is along the lines of Douglas, Elbert, and Arapahoe. They have been fracking across Delbert Road, and it's caused catastrophic damage. Now, these roads across Delbert were paved at the same time that they were paving just on the west side of Delbert. All the roads on top of where they fracked, over in the Scotty Rim area, and you know, crossover into Tioga, right at the end of, you know, East Main Street, all in that area, all the way up to the, you know, the county line, which is right there at the end of Delbert Road. That's the county line between Douglas, Arapahoe, and Elbert. All the roads on the side of the Elbert side are damaged. They've got big cracks in them, about this big. They've got big digests in them. The weeds are growing up through them. This fracking is damaging the land. And when they go in and they frac, when they drill down, of course, they're going to hit oil. There's oil under everybody's house, all of the United States. We are, we got so much oil. There's, you know, we got more than Saudi Arabia and everybody else combined. We have enough to sustain ourselves. But the problem is, it started with Halliburton a long time ago, and they started fracking, and it caused tremendous amounts of damage. But then they tried to cover it up. Then they get LLCs involved and holdings companies. And then they sell it off to all these oil companies, like Encentennial, and Lone Tree, and all these different oil companies. It keeps changing hands. And in Easter, Easter last year, I had two neighbors come over to the house, and they were trying to force my dad to sign contracts, giving up his mineral rights, his water rights. "Please sign this oil lease contract with the Phillips 66 Conoco line that runs under our property." It runs under our property. Now, I'll give you that these structures on the property that were put in before this line in. When they went through to put this line in, they didn't go into code. I can go out to the barn, stick a shovel in the ground, and I'm hitting the pipe. They're not doing it by the code. They're doing it for the money. And I tell you this right now, this building belongs to you. You do not say, "Thank you for letting us use the building." You're the taxpayer. You paid for this. And it's we, the people, not them, the oligarchs and the fat cats at the top that are making all the money. They don't care if your water is poisoned. They don't care- They don't care, you know, if your reservoir is damaged. They don't care about the poisons going into your body. It's we, the people, that own this land, that own this building, that pay their paychecks. They work for us. We don't work for them. And it's about time they start learning that.
Thank you, Krista. Speaker number seven is up next. And number eight, if you could be ready to go.
My speech is a little more than three minutes, so I hope you're all good. This is my grandson Mike up. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to advocate on behalf of my community and my family in regards to the proposed La Plata South well pad. Eight months ago, I found out that a massive oil and gas project is planned 3,000 feet from my home, within a mile of my grandchildren's home and thousands of other children's homes. So for me, this is personal. I'm a nurse, so I know a little bit about health and how ozone and toxic emissions and fugitive emissions can affect our body, our pulmonary system, and our circulatory system. Creston submitted two documents to support cumulative effects summary for health risks by consulting with the firm CTEH with the La Plata South application. Their first study was conducted in 2019 in Weld County and compares emissions with that of La Plata South. This is not an accurate comparative study. Weld County and southeast Arapahoe County do not have the same weather patterns. CTEH does not state names, amounts of wells.
Give you mine.
Okay. This study, this, the study in Weld does not state names, amounts of wells, or distance from each well pad. Samples were taken over a mere 26 days. La Plata pre-production phase is total 300 days. It is not stated in which phase of the project samples were obtained. Drilling, fracking, flowback, construction. The most important data to be considered and accurate comparisons until La Plata South is missing. CTEH obtained a mere 20 air samples taken from four locations over five days during flowback activities around Aspen well pad located in east Aurora Arapahoe County. No dates, no mention of how many wells were in flowback. Only two wells are currently producing in Aspen. So how many wells were in flowback phase in those five days? La Plata South will have 17 wells. This study is a knowing of cumulative effects summary for health risks. A quick search finds three separate incidents in three separate states where CTEH greatly minimized the risks of the effects of an industry on the surrounding communities. A CTEH toxicologist, Dr. McMullins, stated during the cap hearings that, given the right circumstances, even living 100 feet from a well pad could be okay. Yeah. My God. Why are ECMC and municipalities still accepting research from this consulting firm? Certainly, you know, they're exclusive to the oil and gas industry. Do you value us? Do you value our children? Air quality monitoring. There are only four air monitors proposed on La Plata South. This is a 23-acre well pad with 17 wells. There are no monitors off this well pad capturing the VOCs as they leave the well pad. There are no monitors along the hall road. This is a large well pad with multiple emission-producing equipment. VOCs are going to leave this well pad in large numbers. This air quality monitoring plan is completely inadequate to gauge all of the emissions flowing out this pad into my environment. The city of Bloomfield did an extensive air quality study that put monitors off the well pad in the community. This is an accurate way to protect your residents' health and safety from toxic VOCs. Please scrutinize the expert data submitted by Creston and protecting the air quality in and around this oil and gas project. Obtain air quality studies from firms that do not have a relationship with this industry. Thank you.
Speaker number eight and speaker number nine.
Honorable commissioners and manager Thomas, I am Saki Nisshen and I'm a resident of Arapahoe County. I am a physician by profession, and I had the privilege to work as a human rights commissioner at the state of L.A. for 17 years. It has been well documented through numerous studies that unmitigated fracking represents a clear and profound danger to the health and well-being of citizens. Energy development should not come at the expense of public health and environmental integrity, which is clearly be the intent of legislature behind 19-181. I firmly believe it is possible to strike a balance between energy development and public health by proper mitigation. Here are four mitigations. Number one, setbacks. ECMC must demand, and in fourth, mandatory setback of minimum of one mile from water reservoirs, children's school, hospital, nursing home, and densely populated residential area such as ours. These setbacks will not eliminate, but serve as a buffer in reducing the risk of exposure. Number two, temporary transparency and accountability. The operators should be required to disclose all the chemicals used in fracking. Sometimes it's about 1,000. And reliable and accurate data. Number three, investment in mitigation technologies. The industry must adopt advanced technologies such as electric machines, minimize noise, reduce emissions, prevent chemical spills. Number four, community involvement. Local community must have a voice in decision-making about fracking projects. Public hearing must be heard for each and every individual well pad, especially in the light of 19-181 for the cumulative effect on the public health. Commissioners, you are the adjudicator of 19-181. Tasked with preserving our health and safe ecosystem for the wildlife, we, the residents of Arapahoe County, are here as advocates for drinking water via our reservoir. Together, we as stewards of this planet have a responsibility to ensure that the energy development is conducted responsibly. This means rejecting practices that prioritize short-term profits over long-term health and safety. It is time to demand accountability from the industry and push for policies that protect our drinking water by making sure that it is at least one mile away. The cumulative effect of wells such as 32 in Sunlight Long, 20 in Beaver, 20 in Secret, 17 in La Plata, demand meaningful revisions in setbacks. Those setbacks are very primitive. They need new setbacks, and you can do it. This is your moral, ethical, and legal responsibility to do anything. Along with air monitors, we bring, the monitors should be for low-level ozone, methane, CO2, nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, 2.5 PM fine particles. By doing so and by working together, we can build an energy future that is not only prosperous, but also just and sustainable in the long term. Thank you very much.
Next will be speaker number nine. And just as a slight modification for accommodations after speaker nine, we're going to have two additional speakers. I believe they're both youth. So we're going to have speakers nine and a half and nine point seven five before speaker ten. No, that's fine.
Good evening. My name is Fran Willard. I've been an Aurora resident since 1989. I appreciate the honor, opportunity to comment tonight and Star appreciates the fact that you've been a grant 511 earnings for all of the cap OGP's. Thank you. As the state begins the process of reviewing the applications on the Lowry Ranch cap, I want to draw your attention to Weld County. We have all heard over the last year how awful the air is along the Front Range, and we know based on a recent study that 45% of that awful air now comes directly from Weld County. Weld County has over 23,000 wells with over half producing and God knows how many abandoned and uncapped. This was a choice made by the state and by those in power in the county, one that in retrospect doesn't look great to the rest of us. As you review tonight's application, or any of those that are part of the cap, please bear in mind that we, the residents of Arapahoe County, have no interest in being the next Weld County. Case in point, from a financial perspective, things are not nearly as rosy as the industry wants us to believe. According to the city of Bloomfield, which got thoroughly fracked by the same parent company in 2018 through 2020, they're currently losing a million dollars a year due to costs of managing the industry operators and all the monitoring that's required for this dirty industry. So we have to ask ourselves, why would Arapahoe County be different from Weld County from a pollution perspective? Why would Arapahoe County expect a different financial outcome than Bloomfield? What the industry asks us is to dispoil our lands and air and water for a palfrey sum. Why would anyone be interested in this bargain? Pollute your communities, neighborhoods, and homes? Poison your children and elderly? For what? The possibility of losing a million dollars a year? So how should the state act then? Should the commission just push down the road as they always have from the days of COGCC to today's garden management team permitting virtually every application that comes before it? Or maybe it's time to look at the broader picture of our state and planet, both of which are struggling from man-made pollutants and chemicals that this industry uniquely provides for us. Perhaps it's time to put people, place, and plant before operator profit. The cumulative impacts of these projects must be taken into account. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Yeah, speaker nine and a half.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Corinne Young and I live in Arapahoe County, Colorado. I'm here to speak with you about how your decisions will impact the future. Fracking may seem like another industry, but it's not. It's a process that permanently impacts the land, but most importantly, our air and water. Once you pollute the water, you can't just undo it. This plan proposes using fresh drinking water, and it will pollute the water forever. Think back to when you were younger. Did you have to worry about not being able to have clean water when you drink it? When you grow up? I hear every day about how we're in a drought, that aquifers and reservoirs are running dry, and that we'll run out of water. So it's hard for me to understand why the government that is meant to protect my future allows companies to pollute the water. That pollution is increasing our, the pollution is increasing in our water and air because people in power don't understand that every living being that uses, needs resources to live? Or is it simply greed? Fracking companies like CIVTOX use billions of gallons of drinking water for profit. In return, they give us polluted air, ruined land, and no path to recover what's lost. What's, what's good in all the oil in the world? What good is all the oil in the world if the water we need to survive is gone? What happens to your promise to make the world a better place for us when, when that promise is covered in toxic spills and dangerously polluted air? I felt sick on severe air quality days. And if fracking pad is approved, I'm sure there will only be more of those. Think about my generation, your children and grandchildren. What kind of world are we inheriting? A world where we can't trust the water we drink or the air we breathe? How do you think that makes us feel? Do you expect us to solve the problems that previous generations have caused without your help? That's just unfair, and it's dangerous. This is not just about money or business. This is about survival. Are we making choices that will allow us to fix the damage that's already been done? Or are we digging a deeper and deeper hole into a hole we will never climb out of? I believe we can do better. Transitioning away from fossil fuels isn't just a dream. It's a necessity. Protecting water isn't just about today. It's about ensuring that when my generation sets up, we have the resources to lead, to innovate, and repair the damage caused by years of neglect. Please protect our waters for the future and our hope. Show us that our voices actually make a difference, that the life and the future matter, and maybe we can fix the problems before us. Thank you for listening to what I have to say.
My name is Haley. I'm an engineer and a surveyor in Arapahoe County. And clearly, I'm here to protect the future of our kids. I, to put some numbers behind that argument, the Colorado Water Conservation Board estimates that by 2050, Colorado's watering cans will exceed available supplies by 500,000 acre feet per year. That is 163 billion gallons per year, which Denver Water projects as a 75% shortfall in meetings manned. That's in 25 years, folks. Meanwhile, CIVTOX, the operator proposing this pad, is proposing not just using billions of gallons of fresh water here in Arapahoe County alone, but taking that fresh water out of our water cycle completely. That destroyed water in this plan will be trucked to Weld County, where the injection process is already causing induced earthquakes. Do you remember the water cycle in elementary school? State La Plata poses further pollution risks by being a little over a mile from the Aurora reservoir, fracking under critical community water source, going under the reservoir, and violating county regulations by being less than a mile from proposed reservoir B, which is privately owned. Let's put this into perspective of why is the problem? During the devastating fires in L.A., private companies withheld water desperately needed for firefighting, prioritizing profits over human safety. Is that what we want here in Colorado? Oil and gas has caused many fires and is highly likely to cause more in our fire-prone region. The privatization of water leaves our future vulnerable with no guarantees of access when we need it most. The plan forces us towards this polluted, privatized water as there is no evidence of hydraulic separation from proposed reservoir B as design information is proprietary. It's pure cycle. Arapahoe County doesn't have that information. You don't have that information. Instead of allowing our precious drinking water to be poisoned, you can make them reclaim their own wastewater. There are many viable methods of reclaiming produced water and improving processes. It's a vital research focus. I'm getting my PhD. I know it. I see the grants all the time. If reusing their wastewater makes their profits less viable in the near term, they can wait because the fuel isn't going anywhere. Considering that the supply of oil and gas is about to skyrocket in this country and clean water supplies are plummeting, the economically intelligent decision is to stay at this application while reclaimed water processes improve and reserves increase in value. We do not need to cater to timelines for temporary profits to acquire a resource which will simply be burned away, further polluting our air, which is already a severe noncompliance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker number 10. I think we're done with the testimonials. But this is a good chance to get a reminder. If you would like to speak and you haven't signed up yet, please go sit. Miss can bet that at the table. I'll get a number.
My name is Jennifer Robinson, and I'm speaking as an Aurora resident who lives in the Lowry Ranch cap boundaries and about a half a mile from, about a half a mile from the Aurora reservoir, as the trip was. I have spoken to you before, to you before, about the cap. And candidly, I was very disappointed in the decision to prefer the cap. But I am grateful that the approval was not comprehensive and unanimous. And I appreciate the commitment that this commission has recently shown to its regulatory protective mission, and I thank you for your time today. My greatest concerns about fracking this area, like in others, are related to public health. The proving correlation between residential fracking and devastating medical conditions to the childhood dyskemia is especially as a parent and someone with health concerns, frightening that we come close to frightened of come close to covering it. And we know that oil and gas industry representatives have repeatedly said, you know, they dispute those studies and they say new technology makes these operations less dangerous to human health by reducing volatile emissions. But I know as well as you do that deploying these technologies costs money. I've actually worked in the oil and gas industry. I know their job is to profit. So this operator will not take those extra protective measures if they're not required to do so. Therefore, I respectfully ask for you to all be very piteous considering the following as you review and come to a decision on the Plata South application. Firstly, considering whether an oil and gas development plan has met the requirements for electric operations, which you added in the cap, and I appreciate it. Please consider not only the words documented in the cap decision, but also the intent. Electrification was chosen by this commission as the specific way to reduce impacts to air quality and community welfare. While you are required to consider the operator's attempts to use electric power during drilling and production, you are not compelled to approve the proposal simply because this requirement has been met. When reviewing the Plata South application, please perform due diligence and ask questions to confirm that the equipment and operational practices described in the application will actually result in the reduced impacts that were expected by the ATO. Secondly, beyond electrically powered surface equipment, please consider additional ways that the operator could adapt their approach to be more protective with a reduced carthefoot rate. And I was recently looking at Governor Paulson Colorado Transportation Vision. It's focused on reducing emissions from fossil fuel-powered vehicles over the next 10 years. So I was thinking, if you prove these wells will be operating for that entire decade. And according to the application, this plan will require an estimated 606,252 diesel road miles to construct and operate. Just 17 wells. That's the total mileage. And that's a lot of miles and a lot of greenhouse gas polluting, jeopardizing Colorado's ability to meet its 2035 goals. And again, that's just for 17 of the more than 150 new wells seen in this dirty area, and that's just the chart I'm having. So in closing, there are many ways to operate a well pad. Please make sure that any well pad operated in close proximity to Colorado residents, including children and precious Colorado water, which you've heard about for many, are held to the absolute highest standard. The operators can be better if you push them to. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Speaker number 11 is next.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sydney and I'm a 12-year-old resident of South Shore. I'm here today because I'm scared. Scared for my little brother, who is only six years old and just started first grade. Scared for my friends who live near the Aurora Reservoir. Scared for our community's future. Imagine waking up every morning, knowing that the air you breathe, the water you drink, and the ground beneath your feet could silently be poisoning them. Imagine having to constantly worry about whether your child's school is a safe place to learn. That's the reality that Creston's proposed fracking operations bring to our community. Fracking, or hydraulic fracturing, involves pumping high-pressure fluids into the earth to extract oil and gas. But it's a recipe for disaster. The chemicals released by this process will cause respiratory problems, birth defects, and cancer. Research shows that children living near fracking sites face a heightened risk of health problems and our community is no exception. I think about my little brother's school, Altitude, a place where he should feel safe and happy, but where he may be exposed to toxic fuels. I think about all of the other students as well, who deserve to live and grow up in a healthy environment, free from the dangers of fracking. I think about our community, which has worked hard to build a peaceful and beautiful surrounding around the Aurora Reservoir. But Creston's plans would destroy all that. They would bring in thousands of trucks, creating constant dinner noise that would disrupt our lives. They would contaminate our water, making it undrinkable. They would put our safety at risk, making us vulnerable to accidents, fires, and spills. As a community, we're not just fighting against fracking. We're fighting for our future. We're fighting for our children's health, our environment, and our way of life. I urge you commissioners to remember the faces of the people whose lives would be dangling on the thread of life if you choose, you chose to continue with Creston's plan. Remember my little brother, who deserves a safe and healthy environment to grow and learn. Remember our community, which deserves to flourish without the fear of us being silently poisoned. In conclusion, I urge you to prioritize the health and safety of our community over short-term financial gains. The risks posed by fracking far outweigh any perceived benefits, particularly when regarding our drinking water and family health. Let's work together to protect our community, our health, and our future by opposing Creston's fracking proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sydney. Speaker number 12.
Thank you commissioners for your times and the opportunity to provide comment this evening. My name is Jason Randalls. I live in the South Shore neighborhood in a very close proximity to the proposed oil and gas development in the Lowery Ranch site. And I'm here to speak out on behalf of my family, friends, and neighbors. A lot of things seem harmless in the moment, including fracking chemicals that are injected a mile or more into the ground. But as history has shown, a lot of these harmless things end up proving to be much more harmful than originally thought. Some examples: asbestos. Known for its fire resistance, this material was used for decades in many products to make them more durable and fire resistant. It turns out this harmless mineral is a major carcinogen that causes mesothelioma, an aggressive cancer that forms in the lungs, heart, and abdomen, resulting in a five-year mortality rate of nearly 90%. Mercury. This liquid heavy metal was used for medicinal purposes, cosmetics, pigments, and in thermometers. This element is extremely harmful to humans, causing damage to the nervous system, lungs, and kidneys, resulting in it being banned from exportation in 2008 and thereby eliminating it, its use for commercial purposes, both domestically and internationally. Lead. Once used to make things like jewelry, plumbing pipes, paint, tooth fillings, cosmetics, and more, this seemingly harmless element has been linked to brain damage, developmental delays, and behavioral issues, leading to its ban for use in paint in 1978 and in water supplies in 1986. Teflon, a brand that people may be very familiar with, also known as PTFE, is a type of PFAS chemical that was widely used as a nonstick coating since the mid-20th century. It has since been banned by at least 12 states due to its link to health issues, including cancer, liver damage, and thyroid disease. DDT. This was an insecticide that was widely used until its ban in 1972 due to its effects on the nervous system and liver, not to mention the effects on wildlife, such as fish and the species that feed on them, such as bald eagle. These are all things that we can look at in hindsight and say, that was not a good idea, even though it may have seemed like one at the time. Now, we're faced with a situation in which we know at least some of the hazards of the proposed activities on the Lowery Ranch site. And I can't help but shake my head at the fact that we're even considering allowing them to commence, especially in such close proximity to a highly populated area that includes the state's third-most populated city's water supply and countless residences, businesses, and schools. Here are some things we know about fracking. Fracking produces wastewater. In addition to the proprietary cocktail of chemicals used in fracking fluids, flowback from the fracking wells is likely to contain heavy metals such as mercury, radioactive materials like radium, hydrocarbons such as benzene, a known carcinogen that causes blood disorders, cancer, and reproductive problems, and potentially hazardous organic compounds, all of which are harmful to humans. As such, billions of gallons of water used in the fracking process on this proposed cap will be permanently contaminated and removed from the ecosystem. The best, the best we can do is to store it somewhere. But as everyone knows, there's no way. It has to go somewhere. And that somewhere will eventually become a problem, just like the Lowery Superfund Site, which houses a mixture of industrial, municipal, and radioactive wastes as well as hazardous gases such as VOCs.
Destroy those. We're, you're about out of time here, so if you could...
Yeah, I just have like 20 seconds. Not to mention the increased risks of seismic events and wildfires and the increased air, light, and noise pollution. What I'm curious about today is this. What is hindsight and history going to tell us about these proposed activities if they move forward? I for one don't want to find out when I, my family, or members of my community suffer the consequences. We need to stop poisoning our planet and its resources. This will not be a good look in history books.
So we've been going for about an hour now. I think we're going pretty well. So if people need a break, I'm happy to take a break now. But otherwise, I think we can keep chatting long. In that case, speaker number 13. And speaker 14, if you could be ready to go us off.
Good evening and thank you for listening. But on the other hand, that's your job. So anyway, I live about three to four miles west of here. And that's what brings me here to speak tonight. I, like other people here who have come before me, am concerned about health from polluted air, water. I'm concerned about property values. People who live in South Shore pay a lot of money for those places. I have friends who live there. And I hate to think that the bottom will finally fall out because people don't want to live near a fracking area. My husband is from Texas. And there's a place called Pasadena. But the neighborhood, the neighbors call it Stinkadina because of the smells that are emitted from the refinery. I don't know if it's fracking or just refineries. But nonetheless, I don't think we should have to deal with that. Another great example is Suncor Refinery. For years and years and years, we hear reports about polluted river water. We hear reports about health issues from nearby neighborhoods. I don't want that here. And I'm sure other people don't either. We can't avoid accidents. Accidents will happen. But what, at what cost? And, you know, I feel like if I could guarantee that the accidents would cause any major damage, I'd be okay with this. The other thing that really bothers me tremendously: billions of gallons of fresh water will be lost. That means somebody is going to be out drinking water. Somebody is going to be out bathing water, cooking. No. If we could return this, this water back into the eco-cycle clean and usable, that would be one thing. But folks, this is forever gone unless someone can come up, and I'm sorry to be dramatic, but it's true, with a, with a way to clean this up. I also feel like the cons outweigh the pros because I don't think, I mean, I don't really see that a lot of jobs are going to be created here. I see that, I think the only real super winners are going to be the oil people. And there's thousands of other people out here who we need to consider. So I hope that any decision that is made is made by the will of people. I, it just gives me the chills and the willies when I hear "frack, baby frack." No. If you, if you are welcome in a community, that's one thing. If you can, are willing to put out the money, if you're approved and willing to put out the money to use the most extensive safety features, like electronic, is it, I mean, yeah, electric? That's another thing. You know, I might have a little empathy there. But if you're not willing to go the extra mile, I don't know. I don't have anything else to say. Thank you. My mom and name is Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Hi, my name's Michael Rose. And I'm going to turn around because it's a much better look for all of you folks. And you guys can still see me. We're good. I can see your clock. All right. Geez, what was I sitting here? And I'm not going to have all the technical information that all of you provided, especially the children who are providing... I think the children, since this is a democratic process, I think the children should get more votes. They're going to spend more years in this environment than... Than users like me. So also hearing, there's a lot of moving parts to this project. You know, we're talking about, you know, thousands, tens of thousands of miles of diesel miles. We're talking about whether these lines, the lines are going underneath a reservoir. We can't lose a reservoir in this state. We're talking about, you know, what chemicals will also be available in the community to breathe and inhale. Did any of you sign up for that when you bought a house around here? None of you? What are you missing? Anyway, so this is really serious. This is really concerning. And I can, and I'm from Denver, so I'm an outsider. But so is Simidis, I guess, as well. So, and I guess for people who know that, while these are the folks in the community and all of you live around here, don't think that this is just not being noticed by other people in the state. It is. And it is being discussed in people who care about and who are active in the environmental field. So this is concerning. You know, and to touch on a little bit more of the economic and social aspect, we don't need another Love Canal here. People sunk their hard earned money into this place. And for a lot of people, this is an essay. This is where they will derive some income for their families to pass on or for their retirement. Or if they transfer, they will need that to buy a house somewhere else. And so, look at that. Now, Sibeto is coming up with some money, which I would call basically a bribe for paying for some schools. But ask yourself, would you want to buy a house where there's a bunch of fracking going on? Any takers? No one? Going ones? No. Anyway, so, so that's really concerning. And if the, if the property values go down, and we do know they go down in a lot of places where there's fracking, not everywhere, but a lot of places, the property values go down. People may have trouble getting rid of their houses, selling their house when the times come to sell. And also a loss of property values and tax values. So Adams County lost some taxation money because of the values of some of their housing around where there was fracking. So something else to consider. Now you're thinking, okay, well, people are, they're going all NIMBY about, well, it's my house and I'll save money and stuff. Well, that's also money to pay for, guess what? Schools, infrastructure, and also healthcare. I have a friend whose son went to the ICU for an asthma attack. We're in Denver, Colorado. We're in a noncompliant area as far as air pollution. We're in Denver, Colorado. We're in a noncompliant area as far as air pollution. And we live in an area that is kind of enclosed behind mountains and where there's very, there's a big buildup of pollution, especially this time of year. So I just really can't think of this being a viable or thoughtful project at all, no matter what safeguards they promise and no matter what type of inducements or bribery they offer. So, thank you very much, and thank you for listening.
Good evening, members of the Energy and Carbon Management Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Katrina Fox, and I'm the resident and business owner in Rappahoe County. My son's school is just one mile away from Aurora, Missouri. I am here to express my strong opposition to the proposed fracking activities on the State La Plata South well pad, situated alarmingly close to thousands of residents, multiple schools, water and recreational source, and hundreds of businesses. First and foremost, public health and safety must take precedence. Numerous peer reviewed studies have shown that living near fracking sites is associated with significant health risks. These include riskatory issues, increased risk of birth defects, low weight, sorry, low birth weight in newborns, and even higher rates of certain cancers. The chemicals used in fracking, many of which are known carcinogens, can elicit into the air and water posing a direct threat to the health of nearby residents, especially vulnerable populations like children and the elderly. Schools in particular should be sanctuaries for our children, but this proposal jeopardizes that safety. Prolonged exposure to airborne pollutants from fracking can impair lung development in children, increase asthma rates, and lead to long-term chronic conditions. And myself and my husband already have asthma. Second, the risk to local businesses and property values is profound. Fracking operations brings noise, heavy truck traffic, and environmental disturbances that can degrade the quality of life and drive customers away. Additionally, studies have shown that properties near fracking sites lose significant value, impacting the wealth and stability of entire communities. This is not just a local issue, it's an economic one. Third, the environmental risks are unacceptable. Spills, leaks, and methane emissions are not just theoretical risks, they are well documented occurrences. Fracking consumes massive amounts of water, which is especially concerning in our travel-prone region, and often leads to water contamination. And a state that prides itself on its natural beauty and outdoor recreational economy, this project is incompatible with our values and long-term sustainability goals. You've all seen the news this month of the wildfires raging through California neighborhoods. Do you want Aurora, Colorado to be the next residential area speaking out? Furthermore, the track record of the company proposing this project, Civitas Resources, raises significant concerns. According to Violation Tracker, Civitas Resources has incurred over $6 million in penalties across 95 environment-related offenses, including 43 environmental violations totaling nearly $4 million, and 50 air pollution violations amounting to approximately $1.89 million. So this pattern of behavior indicates disregard for environmental regulations and public health. Approving a project by a company with such a history, especially close proximity to densely populated areas, is a risk we cannot afford to take. Moreover, recent incidents in Colorado highlight systematic issues within the oil and gas industry. According to KUNC, state environmental officials, our state officials are investigating multiple counts of falsified data from 350 oil and gas sites throughout the county. I'm Raffi Mottles. This incident underscores the challenges in ensuring compliance and transparency within the industry, further justifying the need for stringent oversight. Finally, this is a matter of fairness. Communities should not bear the burden of industrial development for the benefits of corporations. Residents have the right to clean air, clean water, and a safe environment. Approving the swell pad so close to densely populated areas prioritizes profit over people and says the danger is present for other communities across the state. I urge the commission to prioritize the well-being of our community over short-term industrial gains. Please deny this proposal and work towards sustainable energy solutions that do not put our children, businesses, and environment at risk. Thank you.
Speaker 16, and Speaker 17, if you could be ready to go after.
Hello, my name is Cory Hopper. This is my son Orion. We are residents of the South Shore Neighborhood in Aurora. My husband and I moved here in 2016 because we wanted to be close to the Aurora Reservoir with all its options for recreation and wildlife viewing, and we love it out. We started our family, and now we have a four-year-old son and a one-year-old daughter. The State La Plata South is just the first in a plan to drill over 160 wells very close to our neighborhood, and it has me greatly concerned for the health of my children and the health of our community. My husband and I own the mineral rights to our property, but tragically, that doesn't seem to mean anything because drilling can go on directly under us and our neighborhood regardless of our consent. The problems with fracking are well-known. Numerous scientific studies have found serious health impacts from oil and gas fracking. Fracking well density has been associated with cardiac, neurological, respiratory, and cancer-related illnesses in people that live near wells. And we're talking about putting a lot of wells in an area very close to densely populated neighborhoods and multiple schools. I am a member of the community that will be directly affected by this well pad, and I'm against the State La Plata South pad. The entire Lowery Ranch cap proposal has too many wells going in to our neighborhoods, too close to our neighborhoods, to our elementary schools, too close to the reservoir, and too close to the Lowery Landfill Superfund Site. The most frustrating part is that there's no need for the well pads to be this close. I've heard in numerous public sessions that it's feasible to move them out further east. So why are we allowing well pads so close to our families and our children? I'm inquiring the ECNC, the organization that is tasked with regulating oil and gas in a manner that protects public health, to deny the State La Plata South well pad application as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopper. Do we have Speaker 17?
Hello, my name is Aria, and I just turned 10 this week. I live nearby the planned well pad and attend school close by as well. I am here today to remind you that we deserve better. We live in places full of love, where skies are bright and stars above. But something's wrong. It's hard to see. They're drilling deep beneath you and me. They call it fracking. It's underground, and it can make the air go round. It fills the skies with dust and gas, a danger for the kids in class. Now they're drilling near our schools, building well pads where we play and rule, near landfills, our reservoir, and a superfund site. Something is wrong. This doesn't feel right. Those with asthma, we can't breathe. When the air is thick, we can't just leave. What's worse, some allergies might flare when dirty chemicals fills the air. We already struggle with smoke and haze, and now there's talk of fracking blades. Wildfires spread. They're out of hand with the drilling closed to homes and land. We need our homes, we need our schools to stay safe and healthy. Those are the rules. We want clean air. We want clean land to play and learn to take a stand. So hear us now and make it clear. No fracking here. We hold it, dear. We're stronger when we raise our voice for a future where we all rejoice. The air's not clean. It's filled with stuff. We need fresh air, not this kind of muck. We're just kids. We deserve the best. So a world that's safe, a life that's blessed. So stop the fracking. Stop this fight. Give us clean air. Give us the right to breathe, to live, and to grow up strong, to be free from all that's gone wrong. We'll stand together loud and clear. We're the future, so listen here. No fracking near our schools, water, or homes. We deserve better. We deserve to roam. We are the future. These wells will be here for 25 years. We deserve better. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Aria. Speaker 18.
I love you, Dave there. I'm Rachel, mother of the immunocompromised Aria, and I'm very proud of her for speaking today. The headline reads, "Oil and Gas Firms Operating in Colorado: Falsified Environmental Impact Reports." The ECNC said fraudulent pollution data was reported for at least 344 wells. Hundreds of environmental impact reports have been submitted with falsified laboratory data since 2021. A misleading picture has been painted for all of us for pollution levels from Civitas with an unspecified number of wells. Some of the reports which were conducted and filed by these third-party consulting groups obscured the levels of dangerous contaminants in nearby soils, including arsenic, which we know is linked to heart disease and a variety of cancers, and benzene, which is linked to leukemia and other blood disorders among other pollutants. How are we, as residents, supposed to trust that these new well pads will be handled safely? We deserve to know that we are being put at risk by these carcinogens. This highlights the whole problem of relying on an operator reporting data. Has the commission determined that these reports are minor in nature and present no human health risk? The degree of this falsified data is vast, and we deserve to know, and we deserve better. These fossil fuel companies are self-reporting their own ground level impacts. The recent revelations about widespread data fabrication in Colorado, the fourth-largest oil and gas-producing state in the U.S., raises questions about whether operators and their consultants can truly self-police. We deserve better. We can no longer rely on self-reported data, but how practical is it to monitor hundreds of operators at thousands of sites? We can no longer rely broadly on receiving accurate information. The scope and scale of these actions need to be determined for the best of the interests of the citizens. Civitas, who worked with these third-party consulting firms, disclosed it to have filed falsified data, but has not yet shared the information about which sites were affected. We need additional protections in place to make sure, as wildfires continue to come, we are protecting the places and the people near these industrial activities. Setback rules that increase the distance between wells and people where they live, work, or attend school would be the effective and immediate intervention from a public health perspective, especially since we live in fire-prone areas. Civitas has the capability of moving these pads. They claim their ability to drill four-mile laterals as a competitive advantage over their other producers. Require them. Require them to move the pads. State La Plata South and all of the others to come. We want the truth, and believe me, after over two years of researching the long-term health effects and potential hazards of permitting these wells, we can handle it. Back in August, Chair Robbins said it would be easier to just deny the cap. But the cap was passed with a vote of three to one. And here we are addressing the first well pad within the cap. The magnitude of all of this shouldn't just come down to fines. It should put a halt on all current and all future well pad applications immediately. The regulatory responsibility and the moral responsibility is on you. I would much rather be singing at a karaoke bar tonight. But instead, I am here in front of the Civitas Arena at the fairgrounds. Deny this pad or put a permanent stay on it.
Speaker 19.
Do you want me to karaoke? Happy to see everybody hit.
Probably better you than me. Okay, if no Speaker 19, do we have Speaker 20?
These kids are really hard enough to follow, but yeah, math pops to them, especially the poet. That was awesome. My name is Rachel Lehman, and I am the EJ program coordinator for the Black Girl Parents United Foundation. We serve Amherst City, North Denver, and Aurora, all disproportionately impacted communities in their own right. I want to thank the community for being here tonight. I think this represents the fear people have, and we're looking to you to give us some assurances of safety, more than anything. Thank you, commissioners, also, for your decision on the Secret Stash pad and your football delay on that is really appreciated. These are three items for consideration. Number one, I don't see, there were a lot of documents online available, thank you, but I didn't see in any of those a safety preparedness plan act, something that gives us an idea of what's going to happen if an accident or when an accident happens, how are we going to deal with this? How does the community deal with it? And then also, how, the oil and gas companies have not actually communicated that to the community in a wide-scale way. I mean, there might be some pieces of that and all that information, but I did not glean anything from, anything actionable from the community on how they could keep themselves safe when there's an accident. Number two, oh, yes, like toxic spills, material, pipelines, trucks, and produced water. Number two, we don't have the water spare. The amount of water is astronomical and can never be returned to the drinking water cycle. We recently had a produced water consortium that was convened and recreated a report. I suggest that you all use that as a guide. They've given some serious recommendations about how to handle produced water, and also just to kind of get an idea of how much produced water is being created. So that's available to everyone. And finally, Colorado is not on target to meet its 2030 emission reductions. I would ask that we let the rules recently, or recently, or regulations that were recently passed, like the Gen 2, the air toxics, and cumulative impacts, to take effect before any development is considered. I think we should give those an opportunity to be in operation so that we can kind of see where we're actually at, and we're going to be able to go forward as far as our emission reduction targets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. And I'll use what you said there as a good note. Produced water rulemaking is being continued, but we do have a rulemaking that is upcoming. The first of probably several related to produced water and the recommendations from the consortium. And that will be in the coming, probably another month or so. Okay, Speaker 21, please.
Good evening and thank you for appearing us. My name is David Lyon, and I'm a Colorado native and a resident of Rappahoe County since 2011. Over my lifetime, I've seen a lot of change in the state and in this area in particular. Whether you view population growth as good or bad definitely presents new challenges. It puts demands on our systems and requires more infrastructure, schools, first responders, and overall, yes, energy needs. It's not easy to coordinate responsible and sustainable growth, but your commission is one of the last lines of defense for citizens when new energy development is proposed. And your mission is not ambiguous, although it is a bit of a mouthful, to regulate the development and production of oil and gas, deep geothermal resources, the capture and sequestration of carbon, and the underground storage of natural gas in a manner that protects public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources. And so, as I read the La Plata South application, as well as other information I know about the project, several things struck me as not being in line with their mission. Number one, and this has been mentioned quite a bit tonight, depletion of water supply. As stated in the application, total water usage will be over 864,000 barrels, or over 36 million gallons. To put that in perspective, that's enough fresh drinking water to last over five million adults, roughly the population of all of Colorado, for two whole weeks. I hope you understand the gravity of that. By approving this one well pad, you're essentially permanently removing a two-week supply of fresh water from every person living in Colorado, and that's just from this one site. We will need that drinking water. Number two, fire risks. Fires are on a lot of our minds lately, and this has been referenced as well. While I have confidence that Bennett Watkins Fire is a very capable team, they only list two permanent operational stations on their website, one which is 20 miles or a 26-minute drive to La Plata South with no traffic, and another which is over 12 miles or a 16-minute drive. This travel would be This travel would be on small county and dirt access roads. This is far from adequate to address the very real fire risks. And finally, proximity to reservoirs and plain reservoirs. State La Plata South is just 3,720 feet from Arapaho County's proposed reservoir B, and the horizontal wells will go under both proposed reservoir B and parts of the Arapaho Reservoir. As stated in the application, this oil and gas location is within 2,640 feet of a surface water of this state as well. Despite being downplayed by officials at every level since the start of this project, risks to the reservoir and its dam are real, and fracking underneath the water supply for the city of Aurora is reckless. And this is not a short-term risk. Civitas estimates that this oil and gas location will be active for 360 months, AKA 30 years. If approved, you are putting our community at risk in all three of these areas for 30 years. Please do not take your decision lightly. Thank you.
Speaker 22.
Hello. My name is Evelyn Gennaro, and I don't live near the wells, near the proposed wells, but I still object to them because fossil fuels risk the future for all of us. About 10 years ago, I used to live in Well County in a town that was so small, only as one fire truck. We were so powerless when the frackers came to our town and put up wellheads everywhere. They put them up in the parks, near our homes, everywhere, and our town council was too strong to stop them. I wish that you had been there for us to appeal to when they were doing that to us. So I'm glad you're here. Please remember that you're what stands between us and the powerful oil industry. We are looking to you to protect us from the harm that they can do to our health and ramping up climate change. And in the end, what is it for? We have alternatives to fossil fuels. We do. We don't have, why don't we develop those? I drive an EV. I have solar panels and power walls. That's where the money is. Why can't we develop those and not give in to the hazards of a dying industry? Please deny this project. Thank you.
Speaker 23 and 24, if you could be ready to go on.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Wurthner. I'm a resident of South Florida. I have spoken many times before on this from the beginning. Let me start by saying, there are no duos. If you approve these wells and something happens, there's no way to go back. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Cumulative effects of this project must include the effects of the access roads and the effects of the traffic and pollution that those are going to create. So it's not just the well pads themselves, it's all of the access to it and all of the accompanying infrastructure. In approving the cap, one concession to the project was use electrical power and not diesel. Noise pollution is going to be the problem there. Is that an aspiration or a requirement before they start drilling at all? I know at one point I had spoken to Civitas, and they said, well, we'll use electrical power instead of diesel if it's available. If it's available. So they start, and what's going to stop? Stop them from doing that? Nathan just said something about the fire risk, and I have that here too. The closest fire station is, what, 20 minutes away? Do we want to be the next California? I mean, in a lot of ways, it's fairly unconscionable for you to approve anything without proper fire protection here. It puts, with every other risk we have in the community, from the fracking itself, they are making so much money on this project if it goes forward. How could they not be required to increase the fire protection to the community? The fines and the penalties, if something goes wrong, will only be a drop in the bucket. These are multi-billion-dollar corporations, and unless by historical standards, they may not even be allowed to be collected. And either way, it doesn't accurately reflect the harm and begin to pay enough to fix what they scored, even if they could fix it. The only penalties that operators understand is shutting down operations until the entire problem is fixed and damage mitigated. We ask you to help do that. Finally, Civitas has been telling everybody how responsible an operator and all of their protections and all of the good stuff that they're going to be doing, how they're going to protect us. Here's the problem. Civitas, I saw in the paper just recently, that they look to sell the operation. If somebody came up with enough money, they would be out of here. So how do you require, how do we know who the next operator's going to be? How do we know that they're going to take any of this seriously? So whatever Civitas says about what they do and what they do to protect us, you have to take that with a grain of salt to begin with, because you don't know if they're going to be the one actually operating this. And certainly, they're not going to be the one for the entire 30 years. So I urge you to turn down this application for the well. Thank you.
Speaker 24.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Boyd, and I'm an educator, and I've spent my career connecting students and their knowledge of science to civic engagement. So kudos to all the students who are doing that tonight, and to the well-informed citizens who are here today. So thank you so much for working really hard to make sure that Crestone Peak Resources is putting the health of Aurora residents at the top of their list. We are all stewards of the land for future generations, and we are all making commitments today to ensure a climate resilient future for our children, our grandchildren, and our great-grandchildren, et cetera. We must be intentional in our decisions about our energy choices and the impacts that all of those choices are having on our air, land, and our water. Yes, energy is a key decision about how we move into the future, and renewable energy is the key to that healthy future. But also, making sure that our natural resources are protected is another key. If this goes forward, one of the most important things to make sure is that Crestone is following all of the concerns about air quality. Please make sure that they confirm, that you confirm that Crestone is adhering to its promised emissions reduction measures. Also, when considering transportation of water to the site, the diesel road miles would be greatly reduced by requiring Crestone to include a water pipeline. Removing these trucks from the roadway would also reduce the risk of spills into the Aurora reservoir during transit. What is the Commission's plan for reducing diesel road miles? And finally, has Crestone adequately demonstrated a commitment to using local, efficient power sources for all of the operations? This commitment from the operator is essential to ensuring the ongoing health of Aurora residents is prioritized. Thank you again for what you do. It's so important that you're here to listen and for your commitment to the health of our children and great-grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Speaker 25, and I'm not sure how many additional people signed up, but again, as a reminder, if you would like to speak, please make sure you sign up. Do we have Speaker 25? I'll also look to a callback to Speaker 19, who wasn't here earlier. Speaker 26. That may be everybody. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Oh, perfect. And 27.
Hola, buenas noches. Necesito el productor, pero lo tengo que ingresar. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Paula Moros, centro motorera climática de la organización común. Nací en Maracaibo, que es uno de los principales estados productores petroleros en Venezuela. Cuando nací en el año 1976 oficialmente, se me nació en el sur la industria petrolera en mi país. Venezuela es el país con las mayores reservas probadas de crudo pesado del mundo. A lo largo de los años, la explotación petrolera ha impactado negativamente a los ecosistemas marinos y ha contaminado el medio ambiente, provocando la muerte de aves y peces marinos. De pequeña, experimenté la contaminación sónica cuando las antorchas de quema de los pozos petroleros se encendían a todas horas con un estruendo ensordecedor, y sus vibraciones hacían que las paredes de las casas se agretaran. Sufrí de asma, al igual que muchos residentes de mi zona, que también se quejaban de tener enfermedades respiratorias, las cuales según los científicos podrían agravarse con las emisiones en los quemados en antorchas. Viví invadida por una película aceitosa que corroía en los motores de los automóviles, oscurecía la ropa blanca y manchaba todo. Crescía bajo un cielo nublado, pasado, contaminado. En un lago de agua verde deteriorado por el petróleo que se filtraba por los baleedores submarinos, y aquí jugaban los niños e importarle las enfermedades de la piel que incluían el cáncer. También veía aves cubiertas con sustancias aceitosas que les dificultaba el poder volar y les causaba la muerte. Okay. Sabemos que los beneficios económicos de la explotación resultan muy atractivos, pero las repercusiones sobre el medio ambiente y la población pueden acabar siendo letales. Nosotros seguiremos trabajando en pro de la prohibición de nuevos proyectos de explotación. Seguiremos trabajando en la acción climática. Seguiremos trabajando en la educación. Y seguiremos trabajando en la concienciación de la comunidad. Recuerden que después de este planeta, no hay otro más.
All right. I'm the translator tonight, and I'm going to do the translation right now, sorry. My name is Paula Moros, and I am a climate promoter for the organization COM. I was born in Maracaibo, which is one of the main oil-producing states in Venezuela. When I was born in the year of 1976, the oil industry was officially nationalized in my country at that year. Venezuela is a country with the largest proven reserve of crude oil in the world. Over the year, oil exploitation has negatively impacted marine ecosystems and has contaminated the environment, causing the death of birds and marine species. As a child, I experienced noise pollution when the flares of the oil wells burned at all hours with a deafening roar, and their vibration made the walls of houses crack. I suffered from asthma, as did many residents in my area who also complain of respiratory illness, which according to the scientists could be aggravated by flaring emissions. I lived invaded by an oily film that corroded car engines, darkened white clothes, and stained everything. I grew up under a cloudy, heavy, blue sky. In a lake of green water, deterried by oil seeping from underwater pipelines, children played there. Obviously, oblivious. Oblivious?
Yes.
Oblivious.
Oblivious to skin diseases, including cancer. We saw birds covered with an oily substance, making it difficult for them to fly and cause their death. We know that the economic benefits of exploitation are very attractive, but the repercussion of the environment and the population can add up being lethal. We will continue working to ban new exploitation projects. We will continue working on climate action. We will continue working on education, and we will continue working on raising awareness in the community. Remember that after this planet, there's no water.
Gracias, señor, por dar su comentario, aunque este es español que estamos desgraciados ahora de tener aquí. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Michael Worsman. I'm an interdisciplinary engineer at the university. I work in the automotive industry, in the field of sustainability, and helping them reduce human exposure to toxic substances, as well as with reducing their carbon footprint. I appreciate the opportunity to address it tonight, and while I know according to state law may be illegal to do alternatives analysis on the use of the land, just be aware that to deny these permits doesn't mean we won't have long-term economic gain, since your job is to plan for the long-term energy and carbon management and to take into account the economics of the state. We're looking at probably one of the best areas for geothermal development in the state long-term, which could give us much greater long-term energy and economic benefits for the state, should all these oil wells not be put in for short-term profits for other companies, which will not have as big of a significant impact. The technology is due in in about eight years or will be economically viable to do. But I wanted to address some other concerns I have. One, given all the false data and reporting that's been had, keep in mind, we know there will be spills, there will be leaks. That's just a given with oil and gas. But where does it drain? Right now, the drainage goes down to a place called Sand Creek. We have some lovely city parks like Sand Creek Park, Bluff Lake Nature Center, and other recreational uses. This then goes directly into the city of Denver in the South Platte River. That's what we're talking about, potential pollution myths, not just what we're doing to our community here. And I have not seen very many studies talking about, are we willing to accept that health risk for all the recreational areas and recreation that we derive, and economic rent that we derive, from those water sources? That's something that should be considered, and the Platte River, as we know, goes through Denver, goes up north and off to Kansas. It's used for agriculture, it's used for a lot of areas. We do know from all the studies that once you pollute the water, it gets into the food supply, it gets into the cattle, it gets into the environment, it gets into human consumption. That's what the Prop 65 in California was about, to try to break that cycle. So please, make sure we have the adequate studies and we understand what we're doing there. And lastly, wanted to address, we have the issue of microvibration, which was also earlier addressed. We are just now at the stage where we are beginning to get data on end-of-life of the fracking wells. In Wyoming, there were a couple of areas where they said at the end of life, and not related to the injection wells, they were seeing the most severe seismic activity once the wells are allowed to go dormant. There isn't enough accumulated data to really know what the impact is, so we're looking at 25 years out, potentially some severe economic risks to our water supply, to our dam, to the Superfund site, that need to be considered and properly evaluated before we go forward. I thank you for your time, and hopefully, some food for thought.
Thank you. I just want to briefly say a little acknowledgement. I was a tribal member of the Navajo Nation. We have over, around the ancestral land of over 574 tribal nations that are spread out across the United States. And here alone, we have over 260 federal tribal nations here due to, you know, land encouagement, as well as sea level rises, flooding, and fires that have pushed them into our state. But this is the ancestral land of over 48 tribes. My name is Shayna Oliver. I'm a field coordinator with Moms Clean Air Force. We are a chapter of over 43,000 moms, dads, caregivers, who unite for our children's right to live, learn, play, and breathe clean air in a safe environment. Parents in Aries and many other communities are in very public health impacts from the increased encouchment of oil and gas developments near homes, schools, hospitals, libraries, museums, community centers, parks, farms. community centers, parks, farms, streams, and agricultural irrigation waterways. Most importantly, our children's health is being impacted. As moms, we know oil and gas sites and operations expose families nearby to high levels of methane emissions, a lot of many other harmful pollutants like benzene, nitrogen oxide, hydrogen sulfide. These harmful pollutants are known to increase risk to certain forms of cancer, adverse birth outcomes, including preterm birth and low birth weight, and central nervous system toxicity and respiratory harm. The EPA have also made strong concerns of drilling to close proximity of the Loring Manfield Superfund site would put, would put the Aurora reservoir at risk. Concerns have been raised that any seismic activity from drilling could jeopardize the containment and allow contaminants to enter an aquiferous system that millions of Coloradans rely on. Colorado faces many pollution challenges. The Denver metro area, including Aurora, is failing to meet PPA ground-level ozone pollution standards, according to the state of the air report by the American Air Association. There are no safe levels of these harmful pollutants. And smog exposure is also linked to increased risk of heart attacks, hospital visits, adverse birth outcomes, and impact on respiratory systems. Over 300,000 Coloradans are living with asthma, like myself and my son. We have to stay indoors more. We have many missed school days, workdays, missed opportunities with increased health costs due to the lack of education and strength in protections of oil and gas operations and sites. Nearly 18 million individuals across the United States live within one mile of an active oil and gas well. Colorado Moms, Clean Air Force, Ecomadres Chapter are, we call for your leadership to reject the state La Plata South oil and gas development plan. Our children are counting on us and your leadership. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. James Tang. I'm a double-board certified anesthesiologist and pain medicine specialist. I live in the South Shore community. We just moved to Colorado last year. We didn't know about the fracking project before buying our house. Unfortunately, we probably would not have bought if we knew about it. But here we are. And what makes this fracking proposal so disappointing is that we, the community, will all have to suffer the health consequences so that the oil company can turn a profit. All of us in this room will suffer the health consequences of your decisions. Well, maybe not you gentlemen, but the rest of us, we will all suffer the respiratory consequences, the low birth weight of our kids, preterm labor rates. Everybody here has, has to suffer the increased risk to our children of developing acute metabolicative leukemia. From all the data that we've gathered from the rest of the country, children are two to three times more likely to develop ALL if they're living within two kilometers of fracking wells. Even at five kilometers away, that risk is still not mitigated. It's still 10% higher risk for developing ALL. Overall, the United States, the incidence rate for ALL is four, four cases in every 100,000 kids every year. For our community, if this goes through, it's going to be closer to 1 in 10,000? Who knows? We've got 10,000 residents in South Shore alone. So we can all guess what's going to happen there. What brought us to Colorado is that us as a country, we're on the road to climate disaster. We've got a close friend who's, who quit his iBaking job to become a climate researcher. And he told us that from all of his research models, you know, in about seven years, our plants are going to be too hot in the summer for half the world's population. We're only contributing to our own demise with more fracking and more oil development. UN estimates that 26% of the world's population already has a water shortage. We already don't have enough water. We need water in the future. We don't need more oil, we are going to run out of water before we're going to run out of oil. Fracking does not have a good safety track record. And I understand that in the proposal, they've talked about electric drilling, better containment measures, or maybe not, I don't know, who knows? But it seems like all these new safety advantages, they're all experimental. They've not been proven. So please don't use us as guinea pigs to test these new methods. I hope you'll make decisions that will benefit our community and not for us. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else wanting to speak? Not seen any takers, so I just want to again take this opportunity to say thank you for taking the time out of your evenings to come and join us and speak with us about your concerns. Again, you will have additional opportunities to comment. Written comment will be, can be provided through the website, as well as opportunities to provide public comment at the hearing. And again, this OGDP will be heard, it's currently scheduled for March 19th of this year. So again, thank you very much for your, for your time and for your willingness to come and speak with us. I appreciate it.